Today's theme. I'm Jamie Bayes, President of the Rockwood Board of Education. We're pleased to be able to celebrate the wonderful contribution and accomplishments of our students, teachers, and staff in this virtual format. At this time, I invite you all to join us in a pleasurable.
Pleasure. To the flag. And to the glory. One nation, under God, united in the Lord.
This evening is a celebration. The Rockwood Board of Education recognized the candidates for four different awards. Two of them are presented to recipients that their schools or department. The superintendent certificate recognizes those who have contributed to the success of education in Rockwood. The community sergeant certificate goes to those who support initiatives and its communities through service projects intended to benefit the whole world. The other two awards are presented at Board of Education Awards ceremony. Board of Education award is one of Rockwood's most prestigious awards. This award recognizes people or organizations that have achieved the highest standards of excellence in the body of Rockwood. The above and beyond award recognizes individuals or organizations that have shown outstanding contributions through service or volunteerism by supporting projects or programs that impact Rockwood or its several communities. Please note that immediately following our board awards ceremony, we will hold our general conference. And now it is my pleasure to introduce our Rockwood Superintendent Captain.
Good evening, and welcome to our Rockwood Board of Education Awards Ceremony. While our ceremony may look a little different this evening, it is wonderful to be able to celebrate our successes as a community. And we are honored to share this evening with you. Before we move into the first part of our awards program, I want to introduce a group of people who devote countless hours to serving our communities and our community of Board of Education. Board members, please stand when I call your name. Jamie Bayes, President. Lynn Viget, Vice President. Tom Dunn, Director. Dr. Keith Fender, Director. Randall Miller, Director. Floralee Mondo, Director. And Tamara Bomber, Director. This ceremony is being livestreamed on our district YouTube channel, and we will post a replay of the events on our Board Awards stage tomorrow. Tonight's award recipients are placed in Zoom play galleries that will display on this screen behind me when it is their turn to be recognized. To begin our Board Award presentation tonight, please welcome Dr. Floris Saint, Principal at Greata High School, who will present our first awards. Ladies and gentlemen, Dr. Floris Saint.
Yeah. Thank you, Dr. Miles. Good evening. I'm Dr. Floris Saint, Principal at Greata High School. Tonight, I have the honor of recognizing some of our outstanding students. Let's first begin with our musical accomplishments. The following band students earned a gold rating at the Michigan State Music Festival. Lizzie Bailey. Dia Barry. Jack Foye. Natalie Calcaterra. Cindy Crosby. Aiden December. Frank Ferguson. Haley Friedman. Maggie. Gutiyoni. And St. Joseph Herman. Mathias Herman. Jordan Jackson. Carter Lawson. Miranda Lima Torres. Emily Lawford. Monica May. Ethan Tinko. Vermina Turco. Claire Ripples. Macy Ripples. Julian Russell. Aubrey Syler. Aurora Smith. Sam Stadig. Maddie Swope. Jamie Kedman. Isaac Wilson. Next, the following choir students earned a gold rating at the Michigan State Music Festival. Mary Kate Griffin. Ava Turner. Morgan Brown. Aubrey Syler. Bobby Deacon. Our orchestra students earning a gold rating at the Michigan State Music Festival, they are: Olivia Edwards. Aurora Smith. Ava Land. Nate Sater. Eugene Reiner. Dennis Keenup White. Wilson Thornsbury. Michael Reder. Drew Miller. Renee Richardson. Adam Hader. The following students earned All-State Status in both Band and Choir. Lizzie Bailey. Frank Ferguson. Ethan Tinko. Julian Russell. Morgan Brown. Mary Kate Griffin. Charlie Handstine. Aubrey Syler. Now I'd like to recognize our swimmers. Members of the girls swim and dive team placed second at the Michigan State Swim Meet.
Everybody wait.
Swim and Dive. Olivia Dolan. Sidney Durbin. Emma Harris. Emma Demmer. Marianne Lashley. Aiden Chessel. Abby Cyrus. Kinsey Spoh. Peyton Wells. Next freshman, Aiden Chessel placed first in the 50-yard freestyle and second in the 100-yard freestyle at the Michigan State Swim Meet. Congratulations, Aiden. Sophomore Marin Lashley placed third in this 200-yard freestyle at the Michigan State Meet. Congratulations, Marin. The girls 400-yard medley relay team placed first at the Michigan State Swim Meet. The team consists of Marin Lashley, Olivia Dolan, Emma Harris, and Aiden Chessel. The girls 200-yard medley relay placed second. Placed third at the Michigan State Swim Meet. The team consists of Marin Lashley, Sidney Durbin, Emma Cimber, and Aiden Chessel. Congratulations, all. Now, the following seniors were named to the Missouri Scholars 100 list for 2021. Ashna Ramaya. And Jamie Kedman. Our glory Missouri award recipients are: Jamie Kedman, for knowledge. Savannah Science, for liberty. Morgan Brown, quality. Quinn Thomas, law. Sidney Craig, justice. Jeremiah Schumacher, fraternity. Joey Kuskas, progress. Trace Rutman, honor. Faith Thompson, truth. Brady Walker, virtue. Greecut, shared up, temperance. Keela Benwishaw, enterprise. Kate Waltney, charity. And finally, I'd like to recognize our national merit finalists. A.J. Nolan and Jamie Kedman. Congratulations, all. As we continue the Board of Education Awards, I would like to present Dr. Karen Calcaterra.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Karen Calcaterra, Principal at Lockyac High School. First, I'd like to begin with our musical accomplishments. I am honored to recognize the following Lockyac students who earned a gold rating at the state competition in solo and ensemble division. Evelyn Pigunova, bass. Captain Zo and Erica Chen strings duet. Allison Philly and Ben Philly strings duet. Devon Ellison flute, number nine flute. Ashish Alu, French horn. Lucas Brown, keyboard mallet. Brenna Ericalian trumpet, Brendan Berger trumpet. Noah Davies trombone. Lexi Bayla, Devon Ellison, and Naomi Bookford. Luke Corio. Necky Brodsky, Noah Davies, James Gay, and Flora Leslie trombone quartet. Rohit Tia Ganesh, violin. Brager DeSho, violin. James Zeng, violin. Erica Chen, viola. Diesel Novak, viola. Captain Winger, cello. Sarah Locke, clarinet. Lexi Bayla, flute. Christian Brager Show earned All-State Status in Orchestra. Lexi Bayla, Sarah Locke, and Ashish Alu earned All-State Concert Band status. Junior Trina Magalinto and Junior Owen Foul received All-State Status in Choir. The following students were a part of the Rockwood School District Winter Percussion Group. They are the 2021 Central State Percussion Independent Open Champion. They are Preston Kellenberger, John Rattenborg, Cameron Eltop, and Anthony Azana. Congratulations to all of these students and their musical accomplishments. Junior Anna Sappol placed third in the senior solo division at the Missouri State Dance Competition. And Junior Miranda Gilmore placed third in the junior solo division at the Missouri State Competition.
You should bow to her. All students.
Logan Coleman, Joshua Stow, Anthony Romano, and Darius Relyev. The following students placed first at the Hosses State Leadership Conference. Andrew Tael for Behavioral Health. George Tavasis for Human Broken Development. Ashish Alu for Medical Terminology. Dalton Jerrad, Rohit Friali, and Arjun Ray for Medical Improvement. The following students placed second at the Hosses State Leadership Conference. Trina Magalinto, Behavioral Health. Elena Mallett, Pathophysiology. Vokel Pumar, Epidemiology. Futuretti and Arjun Sresh, Public Health. The following students placed at the Missouri State FPLA Competition. Yara Lickerack, first place for Advertising. Erin Key, second place for Computer Learning Simulation Program. And also first place for Computer Problem Solving. Brayden Ankort, second place for Securities and Investment. Seniors Rohit Friali and Kyle Kloszerman were recognized in the 27th Annual Missouri Scholars 100 Program. And next, I would like to recognize our student journalists. The Legend Yearbook led by Nancy Smith was awarded All-American with five marks of distinction from the National High School Press Association. The Lance R. Key, our school newspaper, earned a first class with two marks of distinction from the National High School Press Association. Senior Sofia Scheller won the Fall Journalism Education.
Sophie.
For Action Photography. Junior Emotion pain won for yearbook layout theme. And sophomore Joey Weaver won for broadcast sports. Junior Jack Dawes earned excellent status for writing at the Journalism Education Association National Student Media Contest. And Senior Peggy Vera earned excellent status for video and packaging editing at the Journalism Education Association National Student Media Contest. Congratulations to these students and their academic accomplishments. Now onto our student athletes. The girls wrestling team led by Coach Berice Blanco and Assistant Pageant Ava Walker, Jo Leirway Keister, Derek Gilbert, and Jacob Meara Tye. Finished second at the Michigan Class 1 State Wrestling Tournament. The team members are Faith Cole, Shayle Wade, Grace Portman, Maddie Johnson, Sophia Scheller, Theraphina Blackman, Toby Gerst, Josette Hartley, and Jayla Jones. Congratulations, all. Sophomore plays with the All-State Class Boy-Boy Wrestling Tournament. Junior Tommy Hagan placed second. Junior Evan Bourne placed second. Junior Andrew Jordan placed third. Junior Joel Lyran placed third. Junior Seraphina Blackman placed third. Senior Josette Hartley is the individual state champion for Michigan Class 1 All-State Girls Wrestling. And Junior Faith Cole is the individual state champion for Michigan 1 Class All-State Girls Wrestling. This is her third win in a row at Michigan. Congratulations. All these students are national merit finalists. Kyle Kloszerman, Rohit Friali, and Erica Chen. And finally, our 14th Warrior of Missouri award recipients are: Rohit Friali, for knowledge. Keenup Stane, for liberty. Ashish Chanel, for equality. Bernadine Pachaya, for law. Sidney Barry, justice. Kyle Kloszerman, fraternity. Jeffrey Chan, education. Captain Minor, progress. Logan Coleman, honor. Trina Magalinto, truth. Maya Frank, virtue. Missy R. Dent, temperance. Peggy Vera, enterprise. And Coquere, charity. Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, please join me in congratulating all of our board awards recipients from Lockyac High School. Now, I would like to turn the program over to you, Dr. Stephen Kedman.
Hello, I'm Dr. Stephen Kedman, it's Principal of Market I C. First, I'd like to recognize the students for their musical accomplishments. Sophomore Brianna Kamorek has been accepted to March in the Fans of America Honor Band as part of 2022 Rose Parade Pasadena, California. The Harshakana Gula, David Grimes, Lawrence Lu, and Alex Ten receive the honors All-State Band Status by Michigan. Maya Anand, Abigail Holmes, and Jennifer Lee receive the honor of All-Battle Orchestra by Michigan. Senior Ivy Williams earned a gold ranking at the state vocal solo and small ensemble by Michigan, as well as the true old Runions, Cat Baring, and Anna Holt. Sophomore Will Ederson earned a silver ranking at the state vocal solo and small ensemble by Michigan. The following students earned a gold rating at the state competition in solo and ensemble division. Isabel Hogan, Tina Wang, Violet Levine, Sal Day, Natalie Walski, Bernadette Gettle, Anna Moran, Anna DePalmer, Jackson McKinney, Abigail Holmes, Ivy Williams, Cat Baring, and Anna Holt. The following students earned a silver rating at the state competition solo and ensemble division by Michigan for band. Isabel Gonzalez. Jackson Betner. Maurice Young. Kristen Holness. Zach Earnstrom. Quentin Williams. Jackson Kenny. Jackson Satts. And William Hummel. Bouchard Saunari, Jackson Plus, and Anna DePalmer were part of the Rockwood Winter Percussion Group consisting of students across the district. They are the 2021 Central State Percussion Independent Open Champions. Congratulations, all. There, buddy. All right, now onto our student athletes. Senior Alex Mickelson, Dyson, placed third in the weight class at the Michigan State Wrestling Competition. Senior Aiden Roden placed third in his weight class at the Michigan State Wrestling Competition. The Markette Jureys will obviously see second place in the time optimism of the state competition by Missouri Journalism Association. Congratulations to you guys. Senior Grant Hayes, Junior Dylan Pines, Junior Ryan Mattant, and Junior Junson, Junson Tank, were selected for 2021 Boy's Day. Senior Amanda Eschelman won the National Award for Aspirations and Confusion by the National Center for Women and Information Technology. Senior Sarah Doris is one of the two Missouri students chosen to attend the 2021 United States Senate Youth Program. Senior Robert Zhang won the State Missouri Artist of the Year Award. The following students received first place at the Hosses State Leadership Conference. Sophie Chang, medical law and ethics. Reconcile Daniel Moody, health informatics. Mini Ravi Chawla, home and public aid. Arshin Moravan, cultural diversity and disparities. Bank Murphy, Ivy Williams, Saro Shao, Adeline Ten, community awareness. Amanda Eschelman, clinical nursing. Suvaras Pudhovar, Anise Batshu, Suprami, Dham, biological debate. And Sri Harshakana Gula, pharmacology. The following students received second place at the Hosses State Leadership Conference. Divya Vanka, digital science. Arushi. Yu. And. Sufi, to the party, healthcare display. Sujay Bhataraju, pharmacology. Danny Zhang, researcher for basic writing and speaking. And Abel Lloyd, sports medicine. The following students placed third at the Michigan State Competition. Priya Zara, who rise up, sports medicine. Ryan McDonald, pharmacy science. Deep Park, biomedical laboratory science. Amoye, and Marat Maari, medical assisting. Rafika, Daniel Moody, medical law and ethics. Avanti Singh, medical reading. Ados Zerban, nutritionist. Anak Kusani, Daxin's Dakar, Benam, Faran, and Akush Basareddy, medical, no mention. The following students placed first at the Michigan State Athlete Competition. Be back, sorry about that. Sidhartha, Sidhartha, Sarantia, Mto, Chang, business, ethics. Anise Batshu, healthcare administration. Alex Lee, business communication. Stephanie Lee, Emily Laurie, and Dorga Sorichak, management decision making. Fatim Chaba, network infrastructure. And Baghun, Vokel, personal finance. The following students placed second in the FPLA State Competition. Ruru Bosalata, banking and financial systems. Lauren Lakeham, business communication. Alex Lee, financial manager. Tasy Sun, social media strategy and also in journalism. Ru Banstil, political science. Jared Lakeham, supply chain manager. Fatim Chaba, business law. Fatim Chaba, Olivia Fox, Krista Johnson, Caitlin Lloyd, and Lauren Moran, all mentioned. The following students placed third in the Michigan Athlete Competition. Haley Laurie, business communication. Anise Batshu, business doctor. Adiv Tachinta, e-business. Baghun, Vokel, agribusiness. Samir Almir, the doer, venue on quality. And Suprami, Dham, sports and entertainment management. All four. Senior Tommy Ariya and Robert Zhang were named from the Missouri Scholars 100 list for 2021 very late students. The following sophomores have been selected to participate in 2021 Missouri Scholars Competition. Helen Laurie, head review. Kevin Townes. And Amoye, Ben Maudry. The following students won second place in the Missouri State Science Bowl by the Department of Energy. Ranky, Daniel Moody. Srihartha Ch, Dhanagula. Song, Sor. Tiest, Dhanagula, Sujay Bhataraju. Junior Carter Van Buster was a national learner in the flow of the school 2021 International Running for Global Multimedia. Senior Law, Psyki, placed third for newspaper front page assigned by the National Spotlight Trust Association. Junior Martin Ellington placed first for news writing by the National Spotlight Trust Association. Senior Warren Pickett placed first for feature writing in the National Spotlight Trust Association. Mark and Messing Staff was named as a casemaker finals by the National Spotlight Trust Association. Mark and Messing also award the Silver Crown by the Columbia National Spotlight Association and also received first place naturally from former school. Junior Stephanie Blair received first place for a local feature by the Columbia Spotlight Association. Congratulations to all of our great newspapers. Following our glory Missouri award winners. Yipikavri, knowledge. Chris Craig, liberty. Myron Sam, quality. Timmy Watkins, law. Beckmar, justice. Amanda Escher, attorney. Dick and Quay, education. Alexander Odissi, bars. Brad Valens, honor. Arushi Bu, Bueno, all, truth. Ivy Williams, virtue. Condo Farm, temperance. Opet, enterprise. Ellen Teal, charity. Congratulations. The following students were national merit finals. Yipikavri. Joshua Carusa. Eric Chau. Fatim Chaba. Harshakana Gula. Frank Hayes. Ami Ariya. Reconcile Daniel Moody. Blue Deckers, an ass line. Bishnu Pumar. Joseph Lou. Logan Millsat, the second. Beckmar. Sri Rozma. Who Croker. Hey, Doc Zerban. Scott Snyder. Anise R. Sodar. Brayden Kobe. Anna Walters. Danny Zhang. And Robert Zhang. Congratulations to all. And throughout Markette's board of awards recipients, the following students have issued the appropriate bases to score. Krista, check the rewards. Benjamin Cook. Jennifer Lee. Congratulations to all. Now it's my pleasure to introduce the last Board of Education Award Recipents, Dr. Emily McCall.
For Rockwood Summit High School, and I have the pleasure of introducing some of our outstanding summer students for their accomplishments. Let's begin with the music awards. Junior Allison Page and sophomore Christian Larson were selected as 2021 Missouri All-State Orchestra by the Missouri Chapter of American State Teachers Association. Andrew Roden and Gregory Green, Runyon's students, earned All-State Band Status. The following students earned a gold rating at the State Competition in the Solo and Ensemble Division. Andrew Roden for Tuna. Zach Harvey for Tuna. Bernadine Malakars, UZ combo. Justin Miller, French Horn. And Danny Vitra, La Rama. The following students earned a gold rating at the State Orchestra Competition in the Solo and Ensemble Division. Allison Page, Violin Solo and String Quartet. Sidney Chang, String Quartet. Sam Bradshaw, String Quartet. Justin Zany, String Quartet. Christian Larson, Cello Solo and Cello Duet. And Isaac Oku, Cello Duet. The following students earned a silver rating at the State Orchestra Competition in the Solo and Ensemble Division. Danny Shetty, Violin Solo. Maggie Yu, Violin Solo. Rick Sager, Violin Solo. And Justin Zany, Violin Solo. The following students earned a gold rating at the State Choir Competition. Angela Colombo, Vocal Solo. Paige Seifer, Vocal Solo. Brandon Denver, Vocal Solo. The following students earned a silver rating at the State Choir Competition. Amanda Higgins, Vocal Solo. Sidney Sepper, Vocal Solo. And the following students earned a bronze rating at the State Choir Competition. Amelia Bell, Vocal Solo. Terry Coroner, Vocal Solo. And Grace Moore, Vocal Solo. Congratulations to our contestants here. We also have Grace Bailey, Ethan Brassel, Brian Brassel, Adam Edgar, Evan Miller and Eddie Condamodis, both part of the Rockwood Winter Percussion Group consisting of students from across the district. This group are the 2021 Missouri State Percussion Independent Building Champions. Way to go, all. Now, the athletes and academics of the season. Senior Michael Fan finished third place in the Class Three State Wrestling Championship Heavyweight Division. Congratulations, all. Allison Page, Abby Gayfield and Michael Ferrano were accepted by the 36th Annual Missouri College Academy. Students placed higher and Vera Hyer won first place for the Single Board at the FPLA Robotics State Championship. Next, we have all the students that were named National American Finalists. Allison Byrne, Catherine Villan, Paul Larson, Caitlin Vessery, Sammy Vitra, Katie Rose, Zach Swain and Calvin Yan. Congratulations to them. Next, two seniors that were named the Missouri Scholars 100 list for 2021. Congratulations to Zach Swain and Calvin Yan. Finally, I would like to announce all the students who are Gloria Missouri Invites. Calvin Yan for Knowledge. Manny Marvin for Truth. Lenora Fayre for Equality. Raina Bryant for Fraternity. Maisy Katehoff for Education. Haley Glenn for Enterprise. Caitlin Metterly for Liberty. Isaac Oku for Law. Allison Byrne for Justice. Lauren Coroni for Progress. Paige Brady for Honor. Ruth Vogel for Virtue. Kyle Strongly for Temperance. And Glenn Cam for Charity. Congratulations. Nice to meet you, Dr. Marle.
There, outstanding. Two students from Curraghville Elementary excelled in the World Robot Olympiad USA National Invitational Tournament in the regular robot game category for ages ten and under. Please join me in congratulating fifth grader Vidute Komet and second grader Barun Komet, who both placed second at the tournament. Way to go, Vidute and Beren. My pleasure to recognize our students at Prestonville for their successes in math and science. And I can begin with the math competition team led by coaches Karen Farmer and Matt Kuzman. They earned first place in the state competition and qualified for the National Middle School Math Competition. Members of this team are Lucaseng, Tujir Riala, Britta Malugue and Nahir Vissani. Next, eighth grader Lucaseng placed in the top four in the Math Council Missouri State Championship. Sixth grader Nahir Vissani earned first place in the Math League Open Enrollment Math Contest. Finally, the science bowl team led by Christina Grove placed first in the Missouri Science Bowl State Competition. Members of this team are: Marjan Bolsa Pradeep, Ayus, Basareddy, Rohan Deshpande, Etarba, Shindi, Preus, Macana. Congratulations, we are very proud of all of you. Now it's my honor to present to you our above and beyond award recipients. The first recognition goes to all of our district nurses. They're going above and beyond during the COVID-19 pandemic. This year, more than ever before, we've seen all of our school nurses dedicate themselves to the arts and the science of nursing. From contact crazings to numerous phone calls and conversations, we cannot say thank you enough for going above and beyond for district nurses. Next, Marquette sophomore Lucy Bean performed life-saving CPR on her grandfather on New Year's Eve. We thank you for your kindness and your courage, and we are so proud of you for your heroic efforts. Tonight, we have six teachers who recently earned or renewed their National Board Certification. These individuals are now a part of the 165 National Board Certified Teachers in the Rockwood Schools. Lori Zhang Burns, Michael Ann Walton, Natalie Fletcher, Mary Shu, Julie Adena and Stephanie Root. Congratulations. Two of our principals recently recognized for their dedication and commitment to students and staff. Lafayette High School Principal Dr. Karen Calcaterra was named the St. Louis Association of Secondary School Principals High School Principal of the Year. And Fairway Elementary Principal Dr. Miranda Cry was chosen as the St. Louis Suburban Elementary Principal Association Distinguished Principal of the Year. Congratulations. And finally, this evening, I have the pleasure of presenting the following schools who are named National Schools of Character this year. Let's hear it from Gaye Elementary School and other elementary schools. This concludes tonight's awards presentation. Thank you for joining us and congratulations once again to all of our award recipients. We have much to celebrate in the Rockwood Schools. Have a great evening.